... words, Attorney Davis, Stu, and Paul Tuthill. So we will get started with the updates. I apologize for the delay.
Thank you.
Take care, George.
Do you want to get started, Counselor, with Alan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's get started with Alan, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, update, May 14th, the number of cases in the Commonwealth, 80,497 new cases yesterday was 1,165. The highest day, case date in the Commonwealth of Mass was April 23rd. There were 3,079 cases. That was the highest day. The lowest day was May 11th, 669 cases. Yesterday, we had 870. So you can see that yesterday, we went up a little bit as far as cases are concerned. In Hampden County, we have 4,889 cases. The number of cases in the city of Springfield currently is 1,858. We added 23 yesterday. We are 38% of the cases in Hampden County. The deaths statewide, 5,315. 174 deaths were reported yesterday in Hampden County. There are 464 deaths. There are 70 of those are City of Springfield residents. That could be, I should say residents. Let me say 30 are residents, 40 are in long-term care facilities. So it means that our death rate is the same as the Commonwealth, meaning we're about 60%. I don't have the data from yesterday due to the computer challenge we had, but that 70 may go up. 98.5% of the long-term care facility deaths had underlying conditions. I'm sorry, 98.5% of all deaths in the Commonwealth had underlying conditions. And so, we are moving forward as far as our face coverings are concerned. You know that the city issued regulations on the same day the governor did, and you know that the face coverings are necessary if you're waiting in line to go in the store, shopping in the store, picking up food at a restaurant, waiting for or riding on public transportation, riding in a taxi, or other ride vehicles, seeking health care, or going to those essential businesses. And when you're working jobs that are with the public. We are using the state's contact tracing collaborative. They're having a challenge with that because they're not reaching all of the residents. We think that's because of the zip code that they're using. And Patrick Sullivan can talk a little bit about our plans for reopening. We're working on our reopening plan guidelines for municipal buildings. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
If you can't hear Justin.
Justin, you're muted.
Okay, let's open it up for questions for Helen. Why don't we do that and then we'll move on to Pat? Are there any questions from the council for Helen?
I have one.
Counselor Allen.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Helen, just what's the trend? Is the trend the way we want it? It keeps going down? I know you gave a couple individual days there, but if you looked at a trend line, is it going down nicely?
Well, you know that our highest day was 104 positive cases. Our lowest day just happened a couple of days ago, and it was 16 or 19. And so, we have seen some highs and we see some lows. Our average is somewhere around 40 cases a day. So we are in a good position as far as cases are concerned because we're doing more testing. So we expected to see, I expected to see more of a spike than we have. So I think we are really practicing good mitigation strategies, and we're doing well right now as far as containment is concerned. We are seeing a couple of clusters that we are concerned about, and we'll continue to monitor those and try to follow up as appropriate. So are we seeing trends? In the Commonwealth, they've had a seven-day almost trend of lower deaths. They are not seeing that same level of trend as far as cases are concerned, but they are lower than they have been, as you heard me say, what the highest day was and what the lowest day was.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Letterman.
He's muted as well.
Counselor Davila, you are muted. I apologize. I'm trying to get Adam in, so forgive me.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. More of a comment I was very pleased to see, I noticed that at least in my district, it appears that there's almost a 100% compliance with the face mask, face code. I was very pleased to see that, and more of a positive comment in this, and I'm glad to see that the population and the people are responding to it.
They are, and I'm very appreciative of the residents of the city because for the most part, they are complying. I visited businesses yesterday, as you know, I've been to Lowell, CVS, Walmart, Walgreens. I've really tried to get around, and smaller shops as well that I'm not going to name, but I think people are really attempting to comply. So yes, thank you very much for, and I think the residents, we need to just thank them also because they are working with us. So thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Letterman.
To add to that, Counselor, Helen can expound on it, but there's been a good interaction with police and the residents around the face mask wearing, and they're certainly not being, police aren't being aggressive at all, but they're being educational like we talked about. And so I think that's worked out very well, handing out masks when they can. So that's been a good experience.
Good. Counselor Letterman.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Good to see and talk with you. I was just wondering, and I think we're hearing a lot at the state level about reopening and the phased reopening. I know the governor has been sort of a very resolute in releasing the majority of that phase one plan on Monday, so we haven't gotten a lot of indication about, at least publicly, what that first phase will look like. But do you have any ideas about, when he's discussing the first phase and reopening, what aspects of the economy he's necessarily talking about? And also, I think the other thing we're hearing on the public health official side is that, you know, until there's a vaccine or a more confirmed treatment for COVID-19, we're really looking at a new normal as opposed to getting back to normal. And do we have an idea of kind of what that might look like in the first phase for folks?
So I think, so thank you very much. As far as the businesses are concerned, the mayor is waiting for the governor's guidance as far as what is he going to recommend, what businesses would be appropriate to open in phase one. They've talked about outdoor dining, as you know, for restaurants. They've talked about construction. There have been a number of businesses that have been mentioned that, well, construction's already open actually, but they are talking about a number of businesses that can safely reopen in phase one. So the mayor is waiting for that guidance. We are internally just working on the municipal building opening, and we will wait for the guidance from the governor and federal and state public health officials to advise us around what those phases need to concretely look like as far as businesses are concerned. I don't think we know that at this point, not unless there's something that has been put out that we're just not, I'm just not aware of.
No, and I don't think that there really has been either, so I was just curious if there'd been any talk kind of among public health officials across the state. And I think the other thing related to the phased reopening that I'm very concerned with is if the governor and the state officials begin to allow reopening of certain parts of the economy in the absence of vaccine or proven treatment or advancements in treatment, I want to make sure that we're in a position to enforce any types of mandates that they put on employers in terms of making sure that their employees are protected. Because in other words, if people are told they must return to work and are no longer eligible for the unemployment benefits that have been put in place, that's a big area of concern. I know we have a lot of constituents that are very likely working in those areas that might go back first. And so I want to, you know, I just hope that we're prepared to be able to go out and enforce any mandates that are put on the employers to protect the employees in those sectors.
I've actually had that conversation with public health officials across the state, and so, and internally with my staff. So you're absolutely right, there needs to be our enforcement and our ability to be in those businesses or working with those businesses to assure that they are doing what's necessary in order to protect their clients or their patron as well as their employees. So that might look like an increase as far as staff is concerned to be able to make sure we're doing that. We know what we have to do as far as the non-pharmaceutical interventions are concerned. Those will continue, the social distancing, the hand washing, the face covering. And you are absolutely right, until there is a vaccine, I don't think that we're going to appropriately understand, you know, really what this new normal is going to be. When there is a vaccine, if and when there's a vaccine, I think then we'll be more comfortable moving out into the community. But we will continue with the non-pharmaceutical interventions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Ramos, followed by Counselor Walsh. And Brendan, if you could give me the ability to lower people's hands, it would be greatly appreciated, sir. Go for it, Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. I have two very brief questions that I wanted to ask of the Commissioner. First one is if we can, actually, Tommy, you may be able to answer this one as well. If you can just give us a brief overview as to what the city of Springfield is doing to further mask mandate and how it's going so far. I know that you mentioned that we were giving out masks whenever we can. How is that working out? Is there any need for any type of modifying of that mandate? How is it going?
Well, from my perspective, and I have visited businesses because I've, through our hotline, we get information from residents around businesses that they feel are not complying with the mask requirement. So I've taken the unique step of going with my staff to many businesses. I have visited 12, and I will tell you, for the most part, it is going well. There have been a few stores that we've had to have conversations with, like Walmart, but they are doing their best to comply, at least that's what I've found. So what are we doing? My staff is going around, I mean, I went to some stores, but they do that on a daily basis and following up on what the residents tell us they are witnessing in the public. As far as the general public is concerned, that's observational for me. I have not gone up to anyone, but what I'm observing, it appears that the majority of those individuals who are out there, out and about, now remember what the requirement is. It is you must have on a mask if you cannot socially distance six feet from another individual or you are with someone who lives in your household. But, so that requirement, what I've seen for the most part, it's being followed. The police department has had the opportunity to ask individuals where they've seen a cluster to remind them, give them a mask, and for the most part, as Tom Ash said, as the Chief of Staff said, I'm sorry, there has been compliance.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Mr. President, if you would allow me one more very quick question. Early on, when this pandemic first started and people started wearing masks and gloves, ever since then, we've been seeing a lot of litter, a lot of people throwing their gloves and masks everywhere. I'm wondering, number one, what is the penalty for someone littering gloves and masks? Is it just a simple fine for littering? And also, who, which department is in charge of picking up those masks and gloves that are being left everywhere?
So it would be the same enforcement as we've had on the books forever for any kind of littering. A TPW has been charged with spot cleanup, and I know Pat's been doing some work in the parks with that. So we're aware of it, it was a topic of discussion at one of our cabinet meetings. We're aware it's somewhat problematic, but TPW is paying pretty close attention to it, and we're, you know, as calls come in and we're getting alerted to where there are, particularly gloves, that we're going out and picking them up. If we see somebody, again, no, I don't know that we've ever during this crisis ticketed someone for that, but I'm sure if we see that, then they'll address it.
What is the fine for that?
$50, I'm guessing.
I think it's $50.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Davila, and then we'll hear from Pat Sullivan, and then we can open it back up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm reminded by your remarks, Tommy, that yesterday was the police memorial at the Springfield Police Department, and I was very disappointed I didn't have the opportunity to go. I know myself and my colleagues regularly go to that to recognize the sacrifice that our police officers have made in the line of duty, so I'm hoping we make mention of how hard they have to work. But I was very sorry I couldn't attend that in person.
I can tell you, Counselor Walsh, that both the Borghardt and Skavina families contacted the mayor this morning and were very thankful that despite the fact that they couldn't attend, that it was, the event was very solemn and it was very respectful, and they were very appreciative that it occurred.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. We're also joined by Counselor Edwards. I know we had Counselor Williams on the phone, and I believe we're joined by Counselor Fenton as well, if I didn't mention you before. We'll hear from Counselor Davila, and then we'll let Pat Sullivan speak, and then we'll open it back up for questions with the remaining of our time.
Yeah, Mr. President, I didn't have a question, my hand was raised.
The floor is yours, Counselor Davila, sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, I didn't have a question, my hand was raised before.
Oh, you said you don't have a question?
No, I don't have a question.
So thank you, thank you, Counselor. We'll hear from Pat, and then we'll open the floor back up for questions.
Yes, it's good to see everyone. As Helen described, we're anxious to get the governor's guidelines, but anticipation of that, we've been working on a plan to open up City Hall and Tapley Street to the public by appointment for the first phase. So we follow the CDC guidelines. So when you approach City Hall, it will be the back entrance that the public would be asked to do. We will be posting the department numbers that people will call in advance to schedule that appointment time. You will have your temperature taken under a tent by the back door. If your temperature is 100.3 or higher, you would not be allowed into the building. You will be required to wear a mask. We will have two staff, people assigned from 7:30 to 9:00 to keep the line moving because that will, this will also include the city employees that are going to be coming into work, and then I'll, we'll have one person assigned both here and at Tapley Street to man that door. At City Hall, we will have signage indicating safe social distance guidelines. The elevator will only be big enough to have one person. If there is a family member, we would allow the two people to be in the elevator. We are going to set up each floor with a one-way traffic pattern, so we will have arrows on the floors indicating the travel route through each floor to get to the desired office that you want to attend. The back staircase will be for entering the floors. The front staircase will be used for exiting the building. The front doors will be remained closed and locked at this time. The clerk especially has expressed a concern of that as being a potential breach, so we feel it's best to have that, those doors closed to the public, and then the side door will be marked and used as an exit out of the building. We will have plexiglass screens where appropriate, so on the first floor, that would be the assessor's office. We've actually developed a prototype, and we were able to purchase the last 30 sheets of plexiglass two weeks ago, and there's really no plexiglass available until the end of June from what we're being told by suppliers, so we were lucky to get the glass so we could safely open. The clerk's treasurer's office, where you have the speed calls that are currently, those will be plugged with plexiglass for the time being until at some time when there's a vaccine, then they would be removed at that point. So our goal is to keep our employees safe and also the residents safe that would be having to come into the building to do business. Just some other areas, when you reach the, outside the different public offices, we will have queue stations, if you will, will be blue circles basically saying safe social distance, and it will give the people a guide of where to stand. That probably will be more important when we enter phase two, but for the time being, we feel if there, for whatever reason, if there is a backup at an office, because we're only going to allow one to two people per office to conduct their business, so there will be a requirement to have a line outside of the hallway. It's similar to how the treasurer's office has done it in the past, but in this case, they'll be spaced six feet apart. About two weeks ago, we had a great conversation with President Hearst, and we are working on the design. He had requested plexiglass stations in between your workstation, so when you return to government in September or October, that you will have that comfort of being safe. So we're working on that design as we speak as well. So we feel that we've come up, and so for Tapley Street, basically, your temperature would be taken at the platform area before you enter the building. We will have reassigned staff to probably man that building because retirement would be the busiest office at certain times of the season, and then the code, Steve Deslitz's department getting permits to contractors will be a very busy office. So again, probably for the next month, it will be by appointment only, and then the science will dictate how we enter into phase two, and of course, the governor's guidelines will give us even more direction. So next week, we'll be meeting internally, once we get those governors directives, to put a plan together that we can share with you and the general public of how we can get back into business. But we feel that we've come up with a safety plan for City Hall and Tapley Street. We're also working with the police commissioner. We're going to install an intercom system. Right now, she had a phone system to communicate, so we're going to change that over to an intercom because just handling a phone and having to keep that clean was going to be very difficult. So, and then I just want to give a shout out to the park employees, our building custodian crews, and our trade staff. Everyone's been reporting to work through this past eight weeks. I know there was a lot of opportunity for departments to work remotely, which I think has helped keep the virus down, but I just have to really commend all the staff, park, custodial, and trade staff have done a great job keeping areas safe, keeping it clean. And I think we've really, when you saw what was going on in the eastern part of the state and their parks, and what was happening out here, people have been very respectful, they've been wearing their masks, they've been safe social distancing, and I think it's provided everyone with a great outlet to get out of their houses and at least have a different stage of scenery. So we're proud that we've, what we've accomplished out here to have that available. And then just on non-COVID, I just toured some, we've also kept our construction going because we have state and federal guidelines that we're following with that grant money. Emily Bill is looking really awesome, so if you have a chance and want to take a drive by, I would say we're probably about the 60% point with Emily Bill. Ruth Elizabeth is coming along nicely, and Chris is just looking at the Central Street numbers. And then we had a great Zoom meeting with the CPA committee on the park projects and work with the neighborhood councils on their application. So we've been moving business along as we've managed the COVID.
Thank you, Pat. I will open it up to questions, but before I do, I just want the council to know that while things are fluid, I think the idea was that we would not return to the chambers until at the earliest September. I think if we can get through June, we only have one more meeting in May, if we can get through June, then we only had one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So it didn't make sense for us to return, in my opinion, before then. We'll also have a little bit more information from a health standpoint in terms of the direction that this virus is going in and whether it makes sense for us to return in September or not. So we'll certainly have some more guidance, and we'll get to see how City Hall is actually doing and faring as they probably will have returned before us. So I will be reaching out to everybody individually. I know I've talked into some counselors already, but you all will hear from me in terms of assessing your comfort level with respect to going back to the chambers at some point in time. Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Letterman, and then Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and a couple comments. One, I'm wondering, and probably I should direct this to you, Tommy, as Chief of Staff, but if there are fewer people coming to City Hall and people are going to be making appointments, are we going to be opening up any parking spaces for constituents when they come to City Hall? Because there's probably 13 vacant spots right now with the city councilors being at home.
Yeah, we're noticing that some of our spots are being used up now by some that we don't know. So something that we can think about, if there are extra spaces, in particular if there are folks that need to be parked closer to the building than others, something that we can talk about for sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be a nice gesture for the people that have to come down. And Pat, I want to say what a great resource the park, the park itself is. So many people are enjoying it at this time of confinement. You're doing a wonderful job keeping the parks open, but I'm sure all of us have noticed how many of our constituents are being helped by being able to go to those parks. Good job there.
I got to say, everyone's been very good about honoring not being able to use the playgrounds. We've, you know, it's a very difficult time, but you know, there's been no vandalism to speak of, and everyone's being respectful. So under the circumstances, you know, I'm very just proud of our city, how everyone's been responding.
And my last question is really about the city council office. I mean, what is the protocol for the city council office and constituents going there?
Yeah, so what we'll do, we will, I did mention this, but we've ordered hand sanitizer stations to be outside these public offices, and of course, the city council office would be included in that. They will be giving, the staff there would have a mask available, potentially glasses that they could wear, and then they would keep that half-door closed. So I don't think it's appropriate to bring the public right into their office, but there will be a way that they can interchange and discuss things with constituents, and then they can get that information back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Letterman, followed by Counselor Finn.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Pat, you know, first, thank you so much to you and to your team also for all the work that has been done. And I would echo the sentiments of Counselor Walsh relative to the parks as I talk with colleagues and contacts throughout the state. They're always very surprised to hear that we've been able to keep our parks open and that we've been able to do it safely, and that's a testament to the work that you and your crew have done to keep that option open for Springfield residents. Relative to Forest Park, I know I've heard from some residents and organizers of the Forest Park Farmer's Market looking for some information about if it might be possible to safely open a farmer's market over the summer. And, you know, certainly we want to keep everybody safe, but I'm also cognizant of the impact that especially in Springfield, our farmer's markets have, as they're one of the only places where you can utilize the state benefits that double the amount of fresh produce you can buy if you're eligible for those. And so especially with the rising grocery prices, I'm just curious if there's been a protocol worked out for that type of operation to open safely.
Yeah, so they submitted a plan to Helen and I tonight. We're actually having a Zoom meeting with them today at 2:15 to review that plan. And following the governor's guidance, they probably could allow 25 to 30 people per time, and then we would have to queue, have a queue line, if you will. So we're going to listen to them today and then bring that back to the mayor and see how it fits into the overall guidance. But, you know, probably after the 26th of May, we could probably start looking at having that reopen on a limited basis with all the safety protocols in place.
Yeah, I think, I mean, health and safety has to come first. I just want us to be cognizant also of the members of the community that rely on that benefit, especially.
The governor has issued early guidance on that, and they felt it was important. He's probably saw North Hampton open this week, so that is considered one of the things he would like to see open under the phase one with some of them already opening. So we're working hard to make that happen. Our market is very confined, so it's just difficult to try to manage, to manage, but I think they put, it looks like they put a plan that we can now work with them on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Finn, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is
This is just a comment in response to one of the things that Pat said about the council chambers. I think we're all grateful for the leadership that President Hearst has demonstrated during this time and really grateful for these continued Zoom meetings and keeping us all on track in terms of getting back to life as normal. I just want to say though, in response to the comment about potentially installing plexiglass in the council chambers, maybe we do end up there at some point. And I don't know how or who makes that decision, but I feel compelled to provide my two cents, which is that at this point, that does seem a little premature to me, particularly given what you said about the shortage of plexiglass. So if we, if we have it, it would seem that we should make sure that we exhaust using it on all of our customer facing locations before we talk about installing it in the council chambers. And I'm sure we'll continue to get updates from President Hearst about what a reasonable reentry point is for us into that room. But if we're back in that room, it's sort of hard for me to imagine it based on the facts that I know right now with plexiglass separating the 13 of us. So no need necessarily for a response. I just felt compelled to say that.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to jump ahead Counselor Hearst on that issue. I just wanted everyone to know we have that meeting and we were working on it. And I think it would probably, we had discussed this, Tom and I, when we talked to Counselor Hearst, you know, that would probably be a phase two to phase three. So when you can start having 50 people in a group together by the CDC guidelines, that's when you probably would start having those meetings again. And again, Helen and I have to review the overall guidance from the state. So it's just basically another mechanism that would be between each counselor desk, if you will. We have to study it and you, Counselor Hearst said at that meeting, don't buy ours right away, get the rest of the government, we're going to be the last to worry about. So that was already our margin orders from Counselor Hearst not to start setting up until we were ready to reopen the council chambers.
And to your point, Counselor Finn, and that's exactly what should happen. I mean, we obviously want to protect employees and the public first. We don't necessarily have to be in the chambers to conduct our business. And so we'll certainly make sure that they're protected before we go back and resume our activities. But point well taken. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you guys doing today? Nice to see all of you. My question is particular to the reopening, maybe you guys kind of got on late. I apologize. I was having issues trying to get on. Golf courses, I know that the governor has stated that we can open golf courses. And the only reason why I'm asking about the golf courses is particular to that, but I know that you've been talking to our friends down here by the river and in isolation, you know, we have a kayak program that we're trying to lift off here over at North River Front Park. And there's only one person per kayak. And it would, you know, just to get people socially out there, I mean, social distancing, but you know, away from folks, if we're opening the golf courses, I know that you, I know you're working on it. I just want to get your two cents on that because for you guys that don't know, Pioneer Valley Road Club is, we're going to be doing kayaks on the river this year. Well, we're trying to, but you know.
We met with them.
So good question, Counselor. So I think, you know, Helen, that's where Helen and I are a little bit frustrated because we're kind of waiting for that guidance from the Commonwealth of how they want the thing to open up. So they did jump ahead to do the golf courses first and there was actually three different avenues for that opening over a two day period. It was very difficult for us as we were trying to open them rather than having the guidance right out of the gate right the first time. But that goes with this, nothing's normal with this COVID virus. Regarding the North Riverfront Park property, we are very supportive of them reopening at the appropriate time. I think what you've got to remember is they would have to open with 10 people or less at a given time. Their groups tend to be in the 50 range or more that attend their programming. So everyone needs to just be mindful of the phases. What is the guidance in each phase? And right now, the guidance in phase one is 10 or less, face mask, hand sanitation, and just being safe. So realistically, that type of a program probably won't open up into a phase three, if you will, when you can start having groups of 50 or more. And as much as they only have one person per kayak, it's bringing those 50 youth together in one area that you can't do at this time. And that's going to be difficult as we try to figure out the summer and even into the fall as we deal with after school and just what we do as recreationally. It's, everything's going to be kind of on hold, I believe, for the summer.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Just to piggyback on that, Pat, my wife, I'm really trying to get my wife out to golf. And I know there's been a lawsuit with respect to those that have disabilities in terms of the carts. I also think it puts folks in a difficult situation who are not able to utilize the bathrooms. So it just seems to me that at some point in time, I mean, I certainly can get around that, as can, you know, my father and my brother who I golf with. But in order for me to get my wife out, we're going to have to find an alternative in terms of making sure there's some way that they can go to the bathroom or that she can go to the bathroom.
We agree. We had probably a 20 minute discussion on that. It bothered all of us the same way. It made no sense. But again, we're following the governor's guidance. So our law department is working with the state attorney on that very issue. The other issue we're looking at, we really consider our golf course as restaurants, if you will. We feel that there could be, they should be, because they actually service, the one in Franconia serves the office building next door for takeout. And our concessionaire is basically ready to do takeout for the golfer. So I think in the next, once we get that governor's guidance on Monday, I think you'll find that Helen and I are just going to have a recommendation to the administration that we feel that we could do takeout and then that solves the bathroom issue because then the concessionaire is then responsible for the cleaning of the bathrooms as the public uses it. But it just be mindful, phase one, every time someone goes in there, it's got to be cleaned. And I think we will have a plan to address that issue.
I think to Pat Sullivan's, to Pat Sullivan's point, Counselor, President Hearst, that was the first thing that we noticed that we felt was discriminatory, particularly for women.
For sure.
Because we felt that it was important that we were able to access the restrooms. And so thank you for bringing that up because that is an important point.
Absolutely. And that might be the only way that I get to golf, Commissioner, is if she comes.
We hope, we hope, we hope, we hope that the governor's press conference on Monday provides a lot of clarity on maybe on that point, but certainly others. And then the mayor is planning his own press conference for probably midweek to address how we're going to do a lot of those things.
Thank you. So I see Counselor Letterman's hand up in the queue. It is now 12:16. So Counselor Letterman and Counselor Davila, we will conclude with your two final questions. I don't see anyone else.
May I just, while you're moving on to Patrick Sullivan, I just want to make sure that you know that the city will be publishing a guide for departments and how they will receive the public. So we have the libraries, elder affairs, animal control, veterans, those departments that greet the public that Patrick Sullivan did not talk about, we will also be assessing. Those departments have given us plans. They have not been technically approved, but they understand the phases and what we're asking them to do. I just wanted to say that because although we're concentrating on City Hall and DPW, we recognize that there are other departments that the public may need to access and we want them to do that safely as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we have Counselor Letterman, Counselor Davila, and then Counselor Allen, and then we will close out after Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had one question relative to the phase reopening and Tom started to touch upon it with the, you know, mayor holding something midweek after the governor Monday. I just want to make sure that, do we know that when the governor makes his announcement Monday, people won't think that it takes effect Monday? In other words, is, will it be clear that the city will still have control over implementing whatever plan he puts in place?
Yeah, we talked about that at length. That's important because we know that a lot of people think that Monday is back to normal in that respect. So we're putting it out on all our social media that that's not the case. And again, after Monday's press conference with the governor, we'll be able to detail that more to the public. But for now, we'll be responsive, you know, through social media and things like that that we're not open for business. It's not back to normal nor will it be for a while.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Davila, and then Counselor Allen, and then we'll wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pat, I just was listening to your, to your update and it seems to me that the plan that has been developed is a very good, solid plan. It makes a lot of sense. I'm a compliment for it. I think it's a sound, safe plan to go forward. I did, the one thing that I didn't hear from the buildings, you mentioned City Hall and you mentioned Tapley, but what about the police department? Are they, what are they doing now? Because I'm still not exactly clear what they're doing now.
Yeah, so the police department, we're installing a microphone system right now. It's a phone system when you try to talk into that lobby. So we just got the quote in last night, so that'll be installed over the next week. And they will have, they will have the hand sanitation, which is, it's actually, they already have that. And she's already been doing testing or signups for her, what's it, the sexual?
Yeah. Also, they're doing the restraining orders at Dwight Street facility.
Yeah. So she will have safe social distance and we'll, we'll set up some queue lines, if you will, in her lobby as well.
Same thing for the youth assessment center?
The youth assessment center is at the Fenton Center and I think they've already have all their protocols in place there.
Very well. And finally, I'm just thinking, probably this is more a commissioner related question, commissioner Clapford, but in terms of the residents who are arrested, what kind of protocol have been followed?
I'm sorry, Counselor.
For Clapford, yeah, how arrested. Yeah, so they set up guidance right in their garage area. They have wash stations before each shift, after each shift, those cars are washed out. We've had two incidences where in people that they have had to pick up were questionable for COVID. We have an agreement with, the basement came down and did a deep cleaning. They actually had an employee that wasn't feeling well. We brought that company in to do a deep cleaning. So we have all these protocols in place that if something does happen in a building, we can do a deep cleaning and address that. Helen and I set that up through the mayor's approval on day one of this crisis. So we, and I think, you know, to Helen's credit and the mayor's credit, that's why we maybe have contained this. When you see what the police and fire in the eastern part of the state, they've had a higher number of individuals affected. And I think because we've had these protocols in place, we've kept our numbers low. I like to think that anyway.
Well, I agree, Pat, but I'm thinking more of the issue of the plexiglass and servicing people and the police department, those that are placed under arrest. I'm specifically thinking also of the booking sergeant. Do they have a plexiglass to protect the booking sergeant for those people have been arrested?
As of now, they have everything in place that they, they feel is important to keep themselves. They have face shields and they have the proper gloves. So the Commissioner Clapford's done an excellent job keeping her officers safe and again, keeping her numbers low.
Any protocols, Mr., for arrestees that they would have in any other part of the building in terms of cleanliness and a deep clean after someone is processed?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Allen, take us home.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. My question is, has the spirit of, what if, what do we find, we put all these protocols in place and then we find somebody is infected with the virus? That is there a, will the protocol include what we do in that situation? Like we shut down that department or is that kind of?
So if, say if someone came in and the next day, and this has happened where a loved one at home has been diagnosed and they now have to self quarantine, we go in and we do a deep cleaning of that, that space. And Helen gives the, basically the guidance of how long they should self monitor or when they should get tested themselves. And mainly they call their primary care physician in a lot of those cases. But Helen's been given good, very good guidance to the departments as those instances have happened. We've had to do a fire department, I think twice, and we've done the police department two different occasions for those instances. And we get right in there and we do those deep cleanings.
And I think it's also important to recognize, Counselor Allen, the contact tracing is very important. So once we have a positive and we reach out to the family members and who they have been in contact with, so it's not just giving guidance to the positive, it's give to the individual who tested positive, but the family as well as other individuals they came in contact with. So we have to make sure if you are in contact with someone for more than 15 minutes and less than six feet apart, you are a contact that has to be followed up with. And we have, we've been doing that.
So we've already encountered that, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Counselor, Counselor President, I know it sounds like we're getting ready to wrap up, but I just wanted to share with you, TJ's not here.
Yes.
But from a, but from a financial standpoint, I wanted to share that he was on a Zoom call meeting yesterday with Secretary DNF and CFOs from across the state and so on. And he just wanted to let everyone know that we are really light years ahead of any other city or town in terms of our preparation and our relationships with FEMA that we've had because of other reasons, obviously, and our deficit spending and things like that that other cities and towns have never even heard of. So it's pretty, I think it's pretty impressive that we're in a position that we are despite what is, what is occurring. But in terms of preparedness and what we're looking to do in terms of getting that money back and being reimbursed, we're just light years ahead. So we're a good spot. We've got a good team and all that. I wanted to share that with you and the council.
So thank you. That is great to hear. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Pat. We appreciate all of the hard work that you guys are doing day in and day out. We certainly, you know, it's not easy, we know. So we appreciate your efforts. Just some housekeeping notes for the counselors. We will be meeting Monday at 6:30. We will have our hearings meeting. That has not changed. It will be Monday at 6:30. We will have our hearings meeting. And then on Tuesday, and I did send an email to everyone, on Tuesday, we will be having at 11:30 to 12:30, a meeting about the rate hike with the Water and Sewer Commission. And then on Thursday, we will have our weekly update from the administration. And directly following the weekly update, we will have a meeting regarding the census with Gladys as well as Molly Canosa Albano from the library. So look forward to seeing you in a couple of days. Counselor Finn, sorry.
Who's coming to the water and sewer meeting from the commission?
So we'll have Jim, Jim Shemo and Vanessa Otero, who is the president of the board. And then I think there's one other, I think their CFO is coming as well.
Thank you.
All right. Counselor Walsh.
I'd just like to say, I hope your wife beat you in golf.
I just wanted to show her, I needed to come out so she can see how, how safe it really is, Counselor Walsh. And I'm sure anybody can beat me in golf. Guys, take it easy. Have a, have a great, great afternoon. Enjoy the day.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Good job.